Order. Again, I'm sorry. Oh, I got you. Obviously Chairman Corbett is out of town, out of the country, I believe. So with that, I'm gonna call it to order. We'll go ahead and give the roll call. Forrest Floyd.
Here.
Roger Burdette.
Here.
Wesley Corbett, not present. Jamie Deloach.
Here.
Reggie Loper.
Yeah.
Phil Kiefer, present. Okay. With that, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Deloach to please give our implication and you remain standing for the pledge.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for today. Thank you for allowing us to gather here this afternoon and please be with us and help this county, this great county, move forward. And please help us do your will, Lord. And please help us to always remember that all the good things in our lives come through you, Lord. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, everyone has the agenda before them. Any changes, additions, omissions?
No, these are additions.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed likewise. Agenda is approved unanimously. Minutes from March 7th, consideration to approve. Has everybody had a chance to look at them? Any comments or motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. And the motion carries unanimously. Again, public comments, if you'll keep comments to the agenda items when they come up and just speak clearly and we'll try to, hopefully, we won't have a lot of public comment tonight, I don't know. And all correspondents from the meeting there in the clerk's office and on the board of commissioners' website. With that, we'll consider the consent agenda and I will read those items. Item number one, consideration to approve to renew a memorandum of understanding between the Effingham County Board of Education and Effingham County Board of Commissioners for ambulance services at various Board of Education events. Number two, consideration to approve to renew an indefinite delivery contract for engineering and architectural services for one year with W.K. Dixon. Item number three, consideration to approve a location agreement for the Historic Society of Effingham to utilize the early streethouse building and grounds for the Old Days in Effingham annual event. Item number four, consideration to approve and publish a new job description for facilities maintenance. Item number five, consideration to approve and publish a new job description for a senior code enforcement officer in the Development Services Department. Number six, consideration to approve an amended contract, two zero two three dash zero eight point zero two from the Coastal Regional Commission related to congregate and home-delivered meals. Item number seven, consideration to ratify and affirm submission of a grant application to and acceptance of a grant award from ACCG dash GSI WCG Online Driver Training Incentive Grant Program. And finally, item number eight, consideration to approve the third amendment to the lease agreement between Effingham County and Renaissance Bank.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed likewise. None being, ayes carry unanimous. Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to unfinished business, it's like we have two items. First item, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by the Ratchford Firm as agent for Stefanos Land Holdings LLC for a conditional use located on Old River Road to permit a shipping container facility zoned I-1, map number 305, parcel number 4B, in the first district.
Is there any discussion on this? I don't have any, I'm just.
Yes, second reading.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, all those opposed likewise. None being, the ayes carry unanimous and the item is approved. Moving on to number two, which is sketch plan, I believe is for the same, same property. Consideration to approve the second reading, oh, sorry. The planning board recommends approving an application by the Ratchford Firm as agent for Stefanos Land Holding LLC. Request approval of a sketch plan for a shipping container storage facility on Old River Road zoned I-1, map number 305, parcel, parcel numbers 3, 4, 4A, 4B, map number 305A, parcel number 46, 47, in the first district. And I'm gonna turn that over for sketch plan. I don't know who's handling that. Ms. Concanon.
Do have a question, you know, the sketch plan, if I could ask it at this.
Yeah, it's open.
Face two, up front, is there, is there gonna be anything in face two or what?
As of now, I'm told.
Thank you.
It won't be containers.
Huh?
It won't be containers. I don't know if he has any other plan you'd have to ask.
I think we got here, I believe it was tabled last meeting?
Right. Because there was some stuff in there.
I think we all kind of had an understanding, we just didn't have a document representing, I think that's.
That's correct, and the engineer provided the face three drawn on that new sketch plan.
Yes.
Well, just to say it, just to say it on record, so it appears to me on the drawing that everything is as discussed last time, in my opinion. Is that, you agree with that, Forrest?
Yep, it's all coming off Old River Road. The containers will be only in that island area in the middle of that property behind the trees and wetlands.
To the western side of.
Limited to the eighty containers, none stacked.
Okay.
And these are all containers he owns, as I understand, or his?
These are all the Walmart containers, that's all I can tell you.
Yeah, looks good to me.
Yeah, and just, just to be clear, this will be the actual plan that will be, that will be voting on, right? Is it in the documents? Okay. Alright. With that, if nobody else has any other questions, comments?
I'll make a motion, we approve alternative one. This is sketch plan presented here.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously and item number two is approved.
Just one reading on the sketch plan, y'all.
Correct.
Yes, correct.
This, yeah. Yep.
Are we?
It was fun, we can have a second if you want. We can have a second if you want.
Are we going to number one, item new business, or are we doing the executive session, or?
Do you wanna do the audit first, since we have?
Yeah, let's do the audit, cuz I told Mr. Graham, cuz I thought we might've been doing a little bit different procedure. I thought it might be, you know, five fifteen-ish before we actually got started on new business, so.
Okay.
So, so yeah, if we did the audit, yeah, if we did the audit, I'm sure he'll be there by then.
What item number that is, we'll go into item.
Two.
We'll go into item number two in new business, we'll skip item number one and we'll, we'll double back. New business item number two, presentation of the fiscal year 2022 audit, financial report by Lanier, Deal and Proctor.
Good afternoon, Mark Barnes, Finance Director. The auditors are here to give a rundown of the audited financial statements for fiscal year 22. But before they do, finance usually goes over a few highlights, so I prepared a few slides with some key takeaways from the financial statements. And y'all should have a copy of this presentation in your papers.
Mark, can you pull your mic closer to you? I can barely hear you.
As her. Okay, so real briefly, these are the items we're gonna go over and it's gonna be income statement items, some specific highlights, a summary of the audit results, and then after that, it's gonna be turned over to the auditors. On this slide, these are the normal operating revenues for our major funds. These numbers come from the statement of revenues and expenses, which in the audit is on page eighteen for the governmental funds and is on page twenty-six for the enterprise funds and the self-funded insurance. You'll note that in fiscal year 22, the Hospital Indigent Fund is now presented as a major fund, whereas in previous years, this was in the Other Governmental Funds section down there at the bottom. This is due to the prepayment of fiscal year 2023's obligation and this fund is expected to be back into the other category in future fiscal years. We see that overall, the revenues in both the governmental funds and the enterprise funds are up for the year. There's a few key items in that I wanna go over. In the Special Tax District, the effect of property tax digest growth on the Roads and Recreation Two mills is the largest driver of the revenue increase in fiscal year 22. And for the ARPA fund, the county had received its full $12 million disbursement from Treasury, but revenue on that is recognized as project expenses incurred. So the revenue increase we see in that fund for fiscal year 22 is directly tied to the progress on those ARPA projects. In the SPOS 2017 Fund, which is the prior five-year bucket, SPOS tax receipts themselves were up significantly, about $3.4 million over the prior year and they were the largest driver of that fund's overall revenue increase. SPOS 2021 receipts didn't actually begin until July 2022. That's when the new five-year SPOS bucket starts. In the T-SPOS Fund, fiscal year 22 was the first full fiscal year that T-SPOS was in effect, while back in fiscal year 21, T-SPOS was in effect for only a couple of months of that fiscal year. So that explains the larger change there. The Other Governmental Funds category includes the FIRE Fund, Development Services Fund, E911 Fund and some others. It saw revenue increases driven by insurance premium tax revenue, building permits and inspection increases and some other items. Down in the Enterprise Section Funds, the Water and Sewer Funds saw increases related mostly to charges for services, water bills, water meters, these types of items. And for the Self-Funded Insurance Fund down there, fiscal year 22 was also the first full year that the county operated as a partially self-funded entity. So the revenues we see here are expected to be pretty normal going forward in future fiscal years and these revenues include the charges to departments for the insurance premium equivalents and employee contributions and also the reinsurance reimbursements that we receive when the stop-loss policy kicks in. And this is just a graphical representation of those revenues and you can kinda see how fiscal year 22 is a little bit up across the board, mostly from fiscal year 21. In the operating expenses side, so these are normal operating expenses for these funds and these are also found on pages eighteen and twenty-six of the annual financial report. And again, we see overall increases from the prior year. From the General Fund, 14.4 million was paid to GDOT for the Parkway payment in fiscal year 22 and that was a one-time expense when the contract was let. Also, as part of implementing the GASB-87 new accounting standard, the General Fund did see a one-time non-cash expenses of about $3 million, which represented the present value of all the future lease payments that we would have to make. Without those large one-time items, the General Fund expenses would have been around $34.1 million, which would have been an increase from fiscal year 21 of about 2.4 million or 7.7%, which is a figure that's kind of comparable with the official inflation estimates going on during this period. The Hospital Indigent expenses reflect the one-time COVID critical need payment that was made in fiscal year 22 and that's the increase you see there. The SPOS 2017 expenses does fluctuate just from year to year depending on which capital projects are underway and how far along they are. The, the T-SPOS road projects were underway in fiscal year 22 and in that was $5 million that was paid to GDOT out of T-SPOS for the Effingham Parkway. For the new SPOS that was approved in the November 2021 referendum, there's a few expenses here, they're related to the bond issuance for the countywide projects bond and also right at the tail end of the fiscal year when we acquired the EMS building in Rincon. That's the expenses there. The Other Governmental Funds category has a significant jump this year and what that is, that is the annual debt service of about $7 million for the T-SPOS bond. Down in the Self-Insurance Fund, we again see the effects of the first full fiscal year of being partially self-funded and these expenses in here are the claims expenses, the stop-loss premiums and plan administration fees. And this right here is just a graphical representation of that. And here you can see in the General Fund, you see the Effingham Parkway payment is the most standout item here. On this slide, we have some of the fund balance changes and this is an effect of the revenues and expenses that we just looked at, plus the effect of any non-operating items such as inter-fund transfers, bond proceeds and other special items. Like before, this information is on page eighteen and twenty-six of the audit and a detailed breakdown of these fund balances and any restrictions that might be placed on them can be found on the balance sheets on page sixteen for the governmental funds and page twenty-five for the enterprise funds. The General Fund here up top, we're gonna cover that in the next slide by itself. Moving down, the Special Tax District, expenses in fiscal year 22 saw an overall increase, but the revenues increased even more due to the digest growth and that was the biggest factor in seeing the fund balance increase in this fund. This fund balance can be used to assist with future water and sewer capital outlays as well as fire capital projects, roads and recreation projects. For the Hospital Indigent Fund, the $692,000 COVID critical need payment played a major role here. The fund balance here is normally used just to meet the $3.6 million annual obligation to the hospital authority that's normally paid out month by month. Down in the T-SPOS Fund, its fund balance decreases as a result of the road projects that have been ongoing during fiscal year 22, plus as we pay the debt service, that fund balance decreased as well. Water and Sewer had an operating gain this year of $876,000, but its fund balance increased by more than that and that was driven by the cost recovery fees, which if y'all remember, those are one-time fees that are not considered normal operating revenues and also there were some transfers in from the ARPA fund as those projects were completed. The, the wastewater treatment plant had an operating loss of about a million dollars and its fund balance overall increased and again, like with the Water and Sewer Fund, this was due mostly to the one-time cost recovery fees that are charged on new construction. In fiscal year 23 that we're in right now and beyond, the Water and Sewer Fund and the Wastewater Treatment Fund will be combined into one fund where they can be more easily analyzed, the whole water system together, though we will retain the general ledger detail to analyze those, to isolate them and look at them separately when we need to. And I do wanna note the decrease in the sanitation fund's balance. This was addressed some months back with an adjustment to the sanitation fee and barring any more unforeseen increases in the sanitation costs, this fund is expected to break even in future years. Its fund balance though still does remain very healthy position relative to its monthly and annual expenses and the timing of its cash inflows each year. The, the partially self-funded insurance fund down at the bottom, it had an overall fund balance decrease and this was due largely to the claims expenses being especially high during this period and I think that kinda echoes some of the information that was talked about recently when the plan year was analyzed. Part of, half of calendar year 21 and half of calendar year 22 was when COVID was particularly prevalent in the county. Looking at the General Fund balance itself, the, the General Fund balance decreased by about $6.7 million in fiscal year 22 and it's important to note that this was with the one-time expense to GDOT of 14.4 million. So if not for that, there would have been a significant fund balance increase this year. The unassigned fund balance, which is the fund balance that has zero restrictions and is completely available for use, is 19 million this year and last year it was about 21.6 million. So not, not a very big change considering the one-time payment for the Parkway that was made. Just like in fiscal year 21, even with more aggressive projections in place for fiscal year 22, we still saw sales tax and vehicle title life and loan tax exceed expectations and in 2022, we also saw energy excise tax overperform as well, which with inflation turning out how it did, I don't think that's really a surprise to anyone on that. On the expense side, while services and supplies and capital for the General Fund were in line with expectations for the year, personnel expenses came in particularly low, due largely to vacancies during the year. So those revenues overperforming and then the expenses not being quite as high is one reason why we saw fund balance decrease by as little as it did in light of the Parkway payment. Just a few highlights and accomplishments for the fiscal year. T-SPOS projects really began in fiscal year 22 and there was about 9.6 million spent on those during the year. The Effingham Parkway contract was let by GDOT early on in the fiscal year and the Vehicle Fleet Replacement Program began this year. There were manufacturing delays in fiscal year 21, but a lot of vehicles did start coming in during this year. The first phase of the salary study was implemented during fiscal year 22. The second phase has since been implemented in fiscal year 23 that we're operating in now. And during the year, a bond of 14.7 million was issued for the newly approved SPOS and this was for the countywide project list. Also during the year, we implemented a pretty major new accounting standard, GASB-87. So here we have the summary of the results. Lanier, Deal, Proctor and Blozer issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements and that's on page three of the annual report. And there were a few findings related to Constitutional Officers Funds and the nature of those findings and the elected officials' responses to those are on page eighty-two of the annual report. And that kinda covers my highlights of the financials, so now I'm gonna turn it over to Kay Proctor, CPA, partner with Lanier, Deal, Proctor and Blozer out of Statesboro.
Good evening, everybody. Is this microphone good? Am I loud enough? Good to see you guys. We appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys again and especially to work with the Finance Department staff. As Mark mentioned, we did have a new accounting standard this year for lease accounting and it was, it was a bear. And Mark did a great job pulling together all of the information that, how many, how many tabs do you think the spreadsheet had?
It was, I think, over eighty, eighty or ninety or something.
Yeah, it was, it was a big undertaking, not only for arrangements that would be considered leases payable, but also for arrangements that would be considered leases receivable, so we'll see that as we go through the financial statements. Your finance staff always does a really good job of putting together highlights on the fund level financial statements that start on page sixteen. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna just focus, as I usually do, on the government-wide statements. At the end, I'm gonna really look at a full basis financial statements for the government. So we're gonna look at financial statements with all the normal stuff like capital assets and depreciation and payables and compensated assets. So if you'll turn to page three, you'll see our opinion. We did have an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. I believe I looked through the journal entries and I think all except for one, two reports, some activity in some accounts that are maintained in another department for quickness or something like that, all of those were provided to us by the finance staff. So they did a really good job of getting that data written after we got them to trial balance. The Mark's Indian A, the county's Indian A, the finance staff starts on page six and that'll get some additional highlights, make some of the same information that you guys just sent over. So I am going to start on page fourteen of the financial statements with the state of the net position of the balance sheet. And then here's always, I'm going to focus on sort of this center column. You have your primary government, you have your component units on the right-hand side. I'm gonna focus on the left-hand side. We have our governmental activities and then we have our business-type activities. Our business-type activities are our water and sewer fund, wastewater treatment plants, and things like that. Governmental activities are everything else. So I'm gonna focus on that middle column, which is the total. So if you look at the first three numbers, your cash and your cash, restricted cash investment, investment, that totals $117,51881. That's an increase in your, in your liquid cash investment that were approximately $8 billion or 7% from the prior year. I always like to touch on the cash position. You'll see your receivables, you did have an increase in intergovernmental receivables of about $2 million, really just due to some timing issues with certain grants were received. And again, you're gonna see also under receivables, a new line for leases receivable, $673,000. And that's gonna basically be the present value of some of the rental agreements you have for certain buildings and land and things like that. And the names of those buildings are not really coming to my head right now, but if you have any questions on that, I'm sure Mark will be glad to answer those and I'll, I'll help as well. Coming down, you'll see, as you go down, you've got some inventories and prepaid items. Prepaid items are $4.9 million in the current fiscal year and that's a pretty significant increase from last year. Last year it was only 1.1 million and that is just due to that advanced payment for fiscal year 23 funding to the hospital, from the Hospital Indigent Fund. You'll see your total non-depreciable capital assets, which would be land, construction and process and your depreciable capital assets, those together equal approximately 158 million. That increased by approximately $30 million or 23% in the prior year. As Mark mentioned, that 14 million dollars would be included in that, in that balance as well. So looking at your total assets, you had an increase of approximately 45 million or 18% from the prior year to 290 million dollars, approximately, 291 million approximately. Liabilities, if you would, you've got your current liabilities and your long-term liabilities classified together. Your current liabilities increased by approximately $6.9 million from the prior year to $33,937,000. Now a lot of times we don't like to see our liabilities increase, but the primary reason for this increase is that you received that ARPA money during the year. Until that money is spent, it's required to be reflected in unearned revenue. So you'll see your unearned revenue was almost $13 million in the prior year in total compared to, that was a 4.7 as well, we'll see. It was a $4.7 million increase from the prior year, so that's gonna be why your liabilities increased largely.
Are all the ARPA funds in the unrealized revenue, or unearned, unearned revenue?
No, I believe there was approximately $50,000 recognized in fiscal year 21 and then about 1.1 million recognized in fiscal year 22.
Continue to draw down that a lower.
That's correct, so as that money is spent, it'll be distributed out to the funds that are incurring those costs and that unearned revenue will pay back. Long-term debt, you will see at $63.6 million. That is an increase of about $5.6 million from the prior year. $2.2 million of that is gonna be attributable to GASB-87 for leases. You'll see leases payable of $2.2 million. Towards the middle of that section, the other part of that is going to be a $2.8 million increase in long-term bonds payable due to the bonds issued during the year. So what really matters down at the bottom is your net position. A lot of times your assets and your liabilities, especially your current assets and your current liabilities, are mainly timing issues. What matters is what you have down at the bottom. So if you'll look, you'll see your total net position in the middle column of $192,327. So if you'll look, you'll see your total net position in the middle column of a hundred ninety-two million three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. That's a thir- a thirty-one point six million or twenty percent increase from the prior year. I did also want to note, if you look at, the net position is split into different line items. And if you look, you'll see at the top, um, net investment in capital assets, and then you'll see, um, certain restrictions. And the first one is capital projects. So if you combine those first two numbers together, you get a hundred and forty-eight million, a hundred and forty-eight point five million dollars, or seventy-seven percent of your net position is invested, either invested in capital assets at this time or restricted for future capital projects. So a lot of the net position is not necessarily operating position, but it's invested in the asset and the infrastructure that the county uses. You have a few other restrictions, and then you come down to your unrestricted net position, and it's twenty-five point three million dollars or thirteen percent of your total net position. And I did also want to point out, and it kind of, it goes back to some of the stuff that Mark talked about. You did have a total increase in net position. However, if you look at that unrestricted number, last year that unrestricted number was around thirty million dollars, where this year it's around twenty-five million dollars. So your unrestricted net position actually decreased, but it makes sense because you've invested that in assets for the county. And it just moved. Okay. Any questions before we move on to the next page? Next page is, is sort of like a profit-loss, it's the statement of activities, and we're gonna be reading this from the left to the right and then down. So if you look, you'll see the first column, and again focusing on the primary government. You'll see your first column are your accrual-based expenses for the county in total. And you'll see, maybe halfway down the page, a total for the primary government. So the total expenses across the entire county on accrual basis, including depreciation and interest, are approximately seventy-two million dollars. The largest, um, the largest item to increase during the year would have been public safety. It increased by approximately three point two million dollars from the prior year to thirty point seven million dollars this year. So we have our expenses, and the way this is set up, it's gonna move over to our program revenues, and then it's gonna leave us with what's left over that was not covered by charges for services and grants to be covered by taxes. So the first line is fines, fees, and charges for services. There is an increase in total in, on this line by approximately three point two million dollars to twenty-five point one for fiscal year twenty-two. And although we had an increase in public safety expenses, we also had, um, an increase in charges for service. So charges for services for public safety also went up by one point eight million dollars to cover some of those costs. Looking at operating grants and contributions, one point three million dollars. That did go down pretty significantly from the prior year. Last, it went down by approximately two point seven from the prior year, and that's because you had all of those, um, those COVID-nineteen relief funds that were in fiscal year twenty-one that were used for operating costs primarily personnel. Capital grants and contributions did go up. You've got four point eight million, it's a one point nine million increase from the prior year. And this is gonna be where those ARPA funds that have been spent are reflected in this statement, and that's why that category has gone up. So coming to the next, the, the next three lines, you'll see that the amount of your expenses not covered by grants and contributions or charges for services is gonna be approximately forty-one million dollars. So looking at your total, um, general, so that, so that amount has to be covered by general revenues, which include miscellaneous revenues, and also primarily property taxes and sales tax. So looking at your gen- your total general revenues, you'll see that they are seventy-two million three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. That increased by approximately seventeen million or thirty-one percent from the prior year. The biggest pieces of that are gonna be a, a two point seven million dollar increase in your general property taxes, that first line to, that twenty-six million dollars. It increased, um, by about twelve percent or two point seven million. And then also the sales tax is gonna be the biggest piece of that. That thirty-seven million dollar sales tax number includes sales tax reported in the general fund, sales tax in your S-PLOS fund, and it also includes your T-S Plus. So Mark's already addressed that, and that's the reason for that significant increase in that number. Any questions on the statement of activities? Um, just to point out briefly again, our, our findings are on page eighty-two of the financial statements. So, uh, a few of these are for teens. It's my understanding that one of these offices acquired some additional staff, it should correct some of that. There was also a software glitch during the year that was not called, and that was primarily due to the fact that the bank reconciliation had some errors on. So they weren't able to really tell that, um, the disbursements were under what they deemed to be. There's still some, um, excess funds in one of these offices that, that need to be dealt with, that have been there several years. Somebody's having to resolve it.
Which ones would you say needs to be resolved?
The tax commissioner's got excess funds, and that's from, um, prior year that we did the PayPal thing, that accumulated some excess funds where the funds were never transferred, they were in the first.
That was on last year's as well?
It was on last year's as well, yeah.
And what is the difference in the findings? Cause there's one that's considered definitely not good and one's a little bit minor.
Yeah, and we have considered these material weaknesses. Um, again, in, with the tax commissioner's office, they, there were, it's recurring, and it seems like the bank reconciliations are still not correct.
Okay, so the material weaknesses, then that is?
That's, that's the more severe one.
Okay, so all four, so all four of these? Okay.
And a lot of times, uh, because the, everything in these offices goes in, it comes back out the next month, unless it's some sort of, um, escrow account of some kind, and then you kind of keep a registry of what's in there. So good bank reconciliation procedures fix almost everything. Or at least it lets you know if you have a problem.
Are you seeing it happen month after month in this case, or is it something that accumulates? So it's not being, it's not ever being really reconciled?
Yeah, it's, it's being reconciled, but they're.
But not true, true to?
People get transactions, maybe, and say what they're still showing is outstanding.
Doesn't get true, right?
And understays the cash or either overstays the cash, depending on whether it's a deposit or a debt.
Exactly.
And they're able to get down to what we need to do, you know, and find those items and do that, but they, they, it will be helpful to them, and they will feel better if they do it on their side. And again, I think there's some progress there. At least in one of the offices. Any further questions?
Well, I know four is a single digit, but it seems like this is more than previous years, which I know still we're talking about four, but, um, I don't know. That's just, and, and I know, I mean, you're just going through and doing it, I mean, noth- nothing towards you, but I don't know, I guess it's a little frustrating when it's kind of some of the same stuff. But hopefully we'll, we'll have a plan in play for next year.
And I hope, I hope you have a look at it as a tool. You know, I mean, that, that's the way it can be used, and it's a lot of times, you know, staffing and just finding the right process that works. And allowing, a lot of times these offices are super busy, and they've got a high volume of transactions, and they're just trying to handle the day-to-day and get by, but those monthly reconciliation procedures are really important to make sure they're held up. Cause if you get, if you, if you have a problem two years down the road, it's very hard to factor, or sometimes even six months down the road. But if you reconcile your bank statement at the end of every month, you say, okay, this should be the amount that I'm dispersing out next month. All these different agencies, you know, you should know within two weeks at the end of the month whether you have a problem or not. And then you can find it.
Yeah.
Are you close enough to the process to make a recommendation of how to fix this? Is it gonna be a third party coming in? Is it more staff? Is it?
Problem, yeah.
Well, I think that there is some additional staffing.
The clerk of courts office did recently hire a, a finance individual, uh, someone with an accounting background. And so that's, that was back in December, I think it was? December, yes. So we're hoping that's gonna help relieve the issues out of there.
And then as far as, um, the tax commissioner's office goes, you know, that, the amount that was in that account that maybe didn't get moved over, it was significant enough that we'd have to continue to hold it as a finding. And it was not something, um, it's something that I would say perhaps some additional procedures are needed to see if we can figure out where it is, but it's kind of outside the scope of a regular financial statement audit. So I think maybe some additional procedures to see if we can figure that out, and if not, just consider really what the next step is for, where that money needs to go. And then the bank.
So y'all could offer that as far as help with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The bank reconciliations are, are easy enough, I think maybe to provide some additional training.
Hmm, okay.
So, and it's also something, y'all have a great resource here. I've always enjoyed working with Mark, Mark.
Oh, yeah, no doubt about it.
He's good at his job. He's a great resource.
Absolutely. But we are busy, so that's why I was kind of thinking, maybe third party come in, do some training, and I know everybody's swamped, and we've had so much growth.
And in all fairness, in the, in the courts office, the, um, issue with the disbursements, that there was a, a problem during the year where the disbursements weren't calculated correctly. It was a software glitch that was not called until September. However, we didn't realize there was a software glitch because we didn't look at those bank reconciliations every month and see whether or not we're dispersing out the amount that passed, the amount that we did give for that month, if that makes sense.
Okay. Well, thank you for everything. I know we've got a good relationship in doing this for a little while, so appreciate what y'all do.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
Getting out of the office.
Yeah.
Thank y'all very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we can move on and, uh, and consider item number three.
Um, number one is here.
Yeah, I was gonna go ahead and do number three, cause it pertains to the audit, and go ahead and, and move, move from that. Item number three is consideration to approve to transmit the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two audit, audited financial statement report to the state of Georgia.
Yes, sir. Staff is requesting approval to submit the audited annual financial report, uh, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two to the state of Georgia. We do this every year, and, uh, we log into the system and submit it to them online.
Staff recommends alternative number one, uh, affirm the audited annual financial report and approve to transmit to the state of Georgia.
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one.
Sir.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Okay, passes unanimous. With that, we're gonna double back to new business, item number one. Consideration to approve a tax refund request as submitted by Manning Graham as representative for Pearl Intermodal located on Old Augusta Road. Got Mr. Groover, but I guess Mr. Kaz, Ms. Kaz is here as well. Okay. I guess we can open the floor. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm behind here.
Chairman Kiefer, you do have staff present to speak with.
Yeah, yeah, um, and it may be, be good, Ms. Kaz, do you mind opening it up, at least giving some background, it may be easier?
Okay, this property is, um, located on Old Augusta Road. Um, in the next year, twenty-twenty-two, Old Augusta Road has become a very big industrial, um, thorough, thorough road. And, um, we did go through and we did redo our industrial schedule for the twenty-twenty-two patch year. And we went through that whole road and we did adjust those land values on that road, um, up and down the, um, the whole, uh, Old Augusta corridor. This property was also adjusted. Now, when this property was, um, the properties around it were rezoned, excuse me, and this property was not rezoned as industrial. So it was rezoned in our system as I. Um, so when we found out that it was not supposed to be an I, we did revert that zoning back. But we did change all of that land throughout that corridor because that whole land is becoming industrial. So we did go through and we tr- we treated all the land like land. Now, what we did this year also is we sent out assessment notice. The, um, state of Georgia mandates our office to send an assessment notice to every property owner every year. So we did do that. We sent those notices out June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two. This gives every property owner the right to appeal. They have forty-five days from the date they receive that assessment notice to write a written appeal. Now, if they do not write that written appeal, then it is assumed that they agree with that value, and then that appeal process is closed. So what we've also done, we have mailed out assessment notices, but we also started putting our assessment notices online so that we have better access for the, um, for the public, so they can come in, they can pull those assessment notices. We also have appeals online as well to open up that process, so it's easier for the taxpayer if they disagree with those values. So this property was not appealed, so therefore that twenty-twenty-two patch year was closed. So that's where we are sitting at with this value. We are recommending that, um, the value stay the same as all the other properties in that, um, geographical location.
The value of this assessment here is based on it being industrial?
It's based on the industrial corridor up and down that, yes, it is.
What would it be if it was the correct zoning?
Well, the zoning, zoning is only one of the, um, the criteria we look at, um, when we, when we value property use. Zoning, we use, we use, um, what is going on in that area, where, what that land is going for the highest and best use.
Right, but if it was correctly zoned, that's what I'm curious about.
Well, zoning, we did not change the land value based on the zoning. We changed the land value based on the use of what's going on in that corridor. So we took all of it off of residential. Is that what you're asking, with the residential land or?
What's the property being used for? Is it being used for industrial use or is it just a piece of residential land?
It's just raw land.
It's raw land. Yeah, typically wouldn't.
I don't see how you can do that.
I'm thinking, that's a heck of a tack move for just raw land.
Well, what we did is through that whole corridor, we changed all of that land because that whole land, all of that land is going for industrial, and it is migrating to that industrial use.
I understand, it's just, that's an, that's an overreach.
Yeah, I, I can't, I can't, I can't agree with that, I just.
But I mean, I understand, if you're just going by your process, I understand.
And I've seen in the past.
But they also have the, um, the opportunity to appeal.
I understand.
That we have here is that appeal process, the, um.
He did not.
Sir?
He did not, he did not do anything within those forty-five days.
Well, Mr. Graham, he'll, he'll have his chance to speak, but he, he did not receive, he did not receive anything on the appeals process.
The appeal was sent to his, um, his home, six twenty-five Jimmy Road, and it also was, um, put online for, um, for each taxpayer to appeal, to pull.
I guess my question would be, did he do anything to cause this to happen other than the input at y'all's office was incorrect?
Well, we changed all the land up and down.
I understand that, but did any, did he do anything? Did he change the land or the use of the land at all?
I have no idea if he did. What we did is we went through and based on our criteria, with the, with what is going on in that geographical location, we changed all of that land to the industrial schedule.
Yeah, typically I've seen in the past, if it's state AR and it's still raw land, it, nothing gets changed. That's what surprised me the most on this one, and this was actually a quick claim deed according to what I saw online, and then all of a sudden it's worth two point seven million dollars, you know, it's, uh, I think if I was, I'm not speaking for Mr. Manning, but if I saw that come in the mail, I'd be appealing, so.
If he saw it, or if he got it.
So, if he saw it, so.
With agricultural land that we have that is zoned for industrial, because we do have land out there that is zoned for industrial that is being used for agricultural land. And we look at what's going on in that geographical region also to value. That's one of the criteria that we look at, so.
And that's a trend, but you know, what if somebody came along and wanted to build townhomes on it, and we did that instead? That's a lot of.
Do you have, do you have the property for sale now for industrial, or? Do you have, do you have the property for sale now for industrial or anything like that?
Now, we did contact, um, zoning and they did tell us that they didn't have anyone calling with interest looking at that piece of land. Now, he does have the right to put it into conservation use. So if you decide that you would like to keep it as a agricultural piece of land, you do have that right to come in and to sign up for that covenant. That is an option that, that you do have. But based on what we have going on in that geographical region, that industrial values are for similar and like properties that are up and down that road that are connected to that road, and we do do that throughout the county. We do look at what's going on with that. So you do have some options.
I, I'm just gonna say.
I get with, and with this property, I mean, and I understand, trust me, I'm, we're, uh, looks like maybe two-thirds is wet, would you say? About two-thirds? It's just showing on, it may be different.
Yeah, the GIS, I looked at that earlier and it's, it's at least two-thirds.
And I'm just. Yeah, and I, and I'm looking and, and what is upland is the narrower part, and if it were rezoned with buffers, you know, it would take a special to use in industrial, you know, um.
It's a challenge.
And I'm just throwing that out there as a, you know, and I know y'all don't consider all that. I get that.
And if he did appeal, you would have taken all of that into consideration. One of the big things that we are mandated in our office too is to follow what that, um, official code of Georgia tells us. And that official code of Georgia tells us that assessment notice is what gives the property owners the right to appeal. It gives them their right to tell us that we are wrong, that they disagree with that value. It gives them the right to go on to the board utilization. And also January through April first is our tax return time, and it is written in the code section that every property owner shall return their property every year. So that is also written in that, um, in that code section. It's not something that a lot of people do anymore because they do get an assessment notice.
Yeah.
But it does have layers built in so that property owners can appeal their property and are able to look at that. And that's why we decided to make sure that we put all of these online, just to make sure that we have another layer because we're not sure that the mail gets to everybody all the time. And the law does not give us that leeway with, with the mail. It just doesn't.
I mean, that's, that's great that, that it's online, but I didn't have a clue that that was online until you just said that. I mean.
There's older people that wouldn't have a clue. I can't imagine having a piece of property that I'm doing, nothing's changed, nothing's, and all of a sudden my tax is, it's ridiculous to me.
We also sent out, um, public comic cards. We have a brochure that we send out to everybody.
It's gotten better, better. I'll say this about you, Jennifer.
I'm not casting stones.
Before I ever became a commissioner or anything, you're always fair with me. You're always very extremely helpful. This is one county I love doing business with because of that, and I've owned properties in the past. Not a lot, but here and there, you've always been pointing me in the right direction. But I have had times where I've purchased a piece of property or sold, and in that time period that that happens, I'll still get old, uh, bills and sometimes I won't get bills, and this happened to me before during that transition period. And once a transition takes place, then I start getting them again, but, uh, so I could see that happening if this quick claim deed popped up and then it got missed or whatever.
He's being taxed though at, with that department assuming that we would give him the zoning. Let's, let's just say he, he asked for this and it didn't get rezoned, but yet he's having to pay that tax.
Because of, you know, I don't think he ever got it.
It's just, that's an overreach.
And over two-thirds is wetlands, so I mean, you can't even use it anywhere.
Yeah, that's.
And I think that's kind of what happened.
He would be more than, he would come in and we could sign him up for conservation use.
And there, there may be uses for it, but you know, to say it's worth what that is, that was huge.
Our office has, the whole problem that, that we have in our office is the appeal process. That is where our office does not have any leeway at all.
Sure.
There, we, we had court cases. We, the taxpayers took us to court in two thousand and ten, ran all the way up to the Superior Court, or excuse me, the Supreme Court because of that, because of that appeal process.
It's tough sometimes.
And your taxes have been paid. You've already paid the bill. So you've paid roughly, what was it, around thirty-one grand? Thirty-one thousand.
What was it last year?
I have that.
The last one I have, thirty-one, three twenty-one.
So it went from seventeen hundred to thirty-seven thousand, or thirty-one thousand, I'm sorry.
Do you know where the tax bill is located?
Um, the tax bill is located at two twenty-five Jimmy Road, or six twenty-five, excuse me, six twenty-five Jimmy Road.
So my homes, I just said thirty-one fifty-five still a client, so that's how it's right.
This is the address that we have on file.
It is, but my tax bill was located to my home address. I don't even know.
No, it's right here. This is here. The tax bills go, they follow what our office has. And six twenty-five Jimmy Road is the mail address that, that we have. And the tax commissioner gets their records from, from our office, but they didn't get.
What'd you do when you got the bill?
Called somebody at the very next day. My wife about to shoot.
And the notices do have that estimated tax on it, right? So, I mean, that, that would have, sticker shock if you received that too.
Plain.
I, I get it, yeah, what.
So what can we do at this point as far as the board?
Why can't we, if it was on ag last year and the taxes were figured that way, I don't see, if he's done nothing, there's been no changes by us to give him a new zoning, I think it should be whatever it had been, the way it's been calculated for years.
I would support that.
I would too. In this case, normally it'd be different, but there's no, it's just been a quick claim over. There's no.
Let's get a, let's get a recommendation from our council. Let's see, see what he thinks.
Yeah, I guess first off, Jennifer's correct in her recitation of the law, um, and they're kind of, you know, hamstrung on that. And, um, so right now I think we need to get some testimony from Mr. Graham, right? And probably ask him about the nature of his property, what's the intent for the use of the property? Is it up for sale? Are they gonna sell it? Kind of, you know, get some more facts on what would lead to a conclusion about the, the value of, of the property. Cause that's what this comes down to is the board of commissioners have the right to refund thirty-one thousand odd dollars. If you decide to do that, I would just prefer that you, if you go that route, you're basing it on an erroneous, um, calculation of the, the property tax value. And then the way you get at that is get some more information about it and what the use is and, you know, the, the wetlands, the uplands, that sort of, um.
And I would agree. I mean, I mean, we hear them sometimes when, when we have the appeal, uh, where, where it might say that they had an upstairs and it wasn't an upstairs. That's arbitrary. That's hard for us to sit up here and make a decision on. This is pretty good info on what value is, but.
Would Jennifer, I just.
Real simple. What, what have you done since last year to make your taxes or make your property worth two point seven million dollars?
Nothing. I, I tried to get the timber cut, but I cannot find somebody to cut the timber because it's, there's so much wetland that would take a truck through and there's only, uh, there's no structures around us, the, the property there. Uh, so I haven't been able to get cut any timber on it.
Have you had anybody look at the wetlands versus the uplands?
Yes.
What, what was, what was the findings on that?
Uh, two point six acres upwards on the, the end that joins Ridgecrest subdivision.
Kind of the northern, I guess.
Were they engineered? Was it an engineer?
And like I said earlier, so as of right now, you don't have it up for sale, anything, just as of right now, it's just no plans. Okay.
Nothing changed on it.
Any development, any storage?
And Jennifer, I, I mean, none of this is directed at you. I mean, I, I like dealing with you and, and I know you have, obviously state law you have to follow, but this, I agree with Commissioner Kiefer, um, this definitely seemed a little, a little bit different than what we've seen before. So it might be some, some grounds we might could take some kind of action here, um.
I have the copy of my tax bill right here.
Hmm.
It's clear that thirty-one fifty-five still a client. It was not mailed to six twenty-five Jimmy Road, which is the address that is on the property, that the taxes were.
Any intentions of putting it up for sale or doing anything with it in the near future?
The reason why there was two tax bills would have been mailed is because January first, twenty twenty-two, he was then a property owner. So it would have went to previous and current, um, owners, so both, there would have been two tax bills.
So y'all send them both ways now?
Well, they do. The tax commissioner sends them to new and old owners. I had them pull the, um, the tax bills for twenty twenty-two, um, to see where they would have, would have gone. And that's through this one of his office.
Okay.
I still don't understand why this would have changed my home address. It's six twenty-five Jimmy Road, it's, it's the address for the owner's address of the property. So.
Well, I guess with all that being said, um, two point six acres of uplands, uh, majority of the property is wetlands. The use has not been changed and apparently it's not currently up for sale for industrial. It doesn't seem like there's any immediate, um, plans to use for industrial. Uh, so my opinion would be to, to refund the money, um, and for the difference of the previous year's, uh, tax year.
I would agree with that.
I'd go along with that.
Um, do you, you want to make that in, you know, in a, in a motion?
We can, we can, if we.
Okay.
I feel like we have sufficient, you know.
Okay.
Reason, and that's the main thing, um.
All right, so do I need to repeat what I just said again or just make a motion?
If you will, just for the record, please.
Okay, so for the record, um, our, um, Mr. Manning Graham has told us that there's two point six acres of uplands on this property. Um, it was previously, or it's currently taxed at the industrial level. Um, he has not made any changes to the property. Um, his majority of it is wetlands and he has no immediate, uh, plans to change it from AR to industrial. So I will make a motion that the board of commissioners will refund the difference of the industrial zoning in the previous year's AR one zoning.
Second.
We clear, Stephanie?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? The motion carries unanimously. With that, I do want to say, if you say, if you get, if you have somebody that calls you tomorrow and wants to buy it, that's your business. I mean, we're not, that's not tied, you know, I mean.
Just for next year, if you haven't had an engineer do a desktop, I would, I would get that and use that for the appeal. Uh, it's a lot cheaper than having it fully delineated and doesn't tie you in, but at least you have a desktop of, if you don't have, already, already have some, some of that, that would help you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to new business, item number four. Consideration to approve a final plat and warranty deed submitted by Clay Price of Simco Investment Group LLC for Blue Jay Commons Phase Two located off Blue Jay Road, which consists of eighty-five, eighty-five lots, map number four thirty-two, parcel number forty-eight in the second district.
So, uh, about a month ago, y'all approved phase one. This is phase two of Blue Jay Commons on, uh, Blue Jay Road at McCall, and it is, as the staff report says, eighty-five lots. So we did a final inspection. Uh, county attorney has approved the deed as to form. Uh, we've done the inspections. We've reviewed the plat, um, everything has passed and staff are recommending approval of the plat, the deeds and the bond that has been submitted for ten percent of the total cost of the reuse, water, sewer and storm drainage infrastructure and paving.
Okay. With that, any, uh, questions or comments from the board? None being. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, and I'll clarify the motion by Commissioner Burdette and second by Commissioner Deloach.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. With that, we'll move to new business, item number five. Consideration to approve quote three eight zero one six two nine four and proposal from OpenGov for a permitting and licensing system. Ms. Bruton?
Good evening. Awesome. Great purchasing agents. Uh, so the Development Services Department is requesting approval of this proposal uh, for permitting and licensing, licensing system. Uh, currently all of our services are being done through ABC, which has many facilities. Um, they don't have online permitting and things like that. So this program will allow, uh, citizens and contractors to be able to apply for permits online and get status updates that way. Um, building inspectors will be able to utilize tablets in the field, um, and update inspection results on site. Um, code enforcement officers will receive notifications through software. Um, and I was informed today that they can also add the tax assessor's office, um, as users so that they can get updates on building permits, um, as they're applied for as well. Um, the quote is broken up into three years, the first year being, um, April first, you're beginning this fiscal year, the end of June. Um, the bulk of the training will happen in year two, which you'll see the price listed, uh, the staff recommends alternative one.
Okay.
How does the price change every year so much? Forty-six to a hundred and twenty-one thousand?
The, um, okay.
The first year is, um, from the beginning of April to the end of June, so not a whole lot is gonna happen. It's just gonna be a lot of data, um, gathering at that time. Year two is when the bulk of the training is gonna happen, the implementation, yeah. So year two is gonna be the big year, um, where they really get into the system. And then year three is gonna be more of the steady year. That would be the, around the rate of the increase after that. Year three should be the steady now.
Okay. I, I like this. I mean, I know it's expensive, but.
And, and I will say, we, we looked at multiple vendors. Uh, we had presentations from multiple vendors on this. Um, generally, uh, the prices were very similar, um, but I will say it was pretty much unanimous with all the part, um, all portions of Development Services that are affected by this, which was obviously planning, zoning, code enforcement, inspections, um, uh, whoever else I'm missing. Um, that they, uh, that they agreed that this was the, um, the best of all of them and it was roughly the same price, so.
Yeah, I was glad to see it too.
And we've had a good experience with them on the procurement side.
Cause we, we have talked about doing this before, right? I think I remember us having similar conversations, so, okay.
I can tell you, from, from being the, on the customer side in jurisdictions with this kind of software, it's, it's, uh, great. And I know it will be from the staff's side and supporting, all this is funded through fees, permit fees. You know, it's not coming from the general fund. It is, it is funding itself, so. That's right. So, um, any more questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve if there are no questions.
I'll second.
Yeah, we have a motion by Commissioner Deloach, a second by Commissioner Burdette. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed likewise? None being, the eyes carry. Unanimous. Moving on to item, new business, item number six. Consideration to approve a proposal from Eagle View, Eagle View for pictometry flights for the tax assessor's office.
Yes, sir. So the Chief of Fraser is requesting approval. Um, the first flight, um, under this program will not actually take place until January, February of twenty twenty-four. Um, the reason for getting this approved so early is number one, to make sure it gets approved in the budget, and number two, to get actually on their flight schedule. Um, because that does fill up pretty quickly. There's no payments due until the flight takes place. And this contract is for a six-year term, which includes two flight projects, as shown on your staff report. Uh, the staff recommends alternative one.
This one's pretty strange for me. What, so they're gonna take pictures of the area and then look what happens? What, so they're going to take pictures of the area and then look what happens? Yeah, that's a whole lot of money. Yeah, but we're going to spend, is it, so we'll have two flights for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per flight?
We only have four flights. We're going to have, in a bulk, here you have your first set and then you have a second set. So the first set, they're going to come in and they fly the whole county. And what they do is the, the planes that they use, they're able to take pictures of all four sides of the, of the structures. And they're able to go through the whole county and give us really good aerials that we can use for our assessments. The IDA can use them, any, really any department can use them. Nine one one uses them. The second set of flights that we were looking at are going to target the industrial areas so that we'll have really good updated flights for the industrial, for the IDA, for anybody else that may need to, to see these, see these flights. We also have what's called Change Finder and Sketch Finder. Last year, we went through and, or the last sets of flights, we went through and we did a pool finder. In two weeks, we found over fifty thousand dollars of taxable income. That's not assessed value. That is actual tax dollars that we put on the books. We found a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars of taxable money by using the software, just by using the different change finders. So we're finding and we're paying for what we're finding. And the software is a really, really good tool. It also has built in a, a mechanism that if there is a natural disaster, that they'll come in and they'll fly that natural disaster and give us those aerials within, I think it's two weeks, I think it is, maybe two weeks, something like that. But they also have that built into that cost.
So we take that cost and double that, a hundred and seventy-five times two, or just one?
Nope, that's a.
That's total for both flights, practically.
Four flights.
So why don't we use Google Earth for some of the same stuff?
We can't get the aerial photography that we have with this. We can't get close enough. We're using three inch and six inch pixels to get down. And we're able to go through and turn all of these, these flights around these, these imageries. In that, I guess that three sixty, we're able to look at everything that we have going on. We're able to pick up houses that we don't have or pick up property that we don't have or we can't access. We're able to go ahead and measure that right there. So we're able to use that as a review tool. The state mandates us to visit a property every, once every three years. G double A O and I double A O does, do recognize pictometry as a form of review. So it does also help us keep in compliance with what the state asks us to do also.
But we're still do the drive-bys as well. Still do everything we normally, normally do. It's just a big ticket for something we, you know, in Google Earth now, you can get, you know, year-old data to see what happened last year. You know, it's, it's very updated and you can get, zoom in and get all the rooftops that you want, you know, for, um, it's free. That's my concern.
A hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars of tax dollars. That's not assessed value.
You don't think you could have found that on Google Earth? What would be the difference between the two?
What they do, what this imagery does is it pulls sketches that we have and it pulls what we don't have and it tells us that we're missing a building. It will tell us.
So it's got an algorithm in there that will, so you're not manually going through the whole county?
Tells us. Tells us if we're missing a building, the old, the new program that they have is called Sketch Validator. So what we're going to do now, instead of taking just our buildings to buildings and laying them over, they're going to actually export our, our sketches out of Wing Gap and they're going to overlay those sketches on top of the, of the photography. And it's going to tell us what we're missing. It's going to be able to tell us if it's missing a porch, if it's missing, you know, all of these other components. And how they do that, pictometry has a lot of little companies. They have roofing companies. They have lots of different other programs that they use to be able to go through and develop all of these different algorithms. So they're able to come through and be able to find all of this information that we maybe have not been able to find in the past.
Got you. Okay. I was looking for the data to back up that spend, you know, so that helps a lot. Thank you.
Any more questions, comments? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve, order number one.
We get a second? I'm sorry. Oh, did you? Sorry. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Loper and a second by Commissioner Burdette. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. None being, ayes carry. Moving on to new business item number seven. Consideration to approve change order number two to task order twenty-one dash twenty-five dash zero zero four with Robert Civil Engineering for the F D R E for Ash Roads Design and Construction Management.
Yes, sir. So the original agreement with Robert's included thirteen different roads. You may recall change order one, there was a sixty-five thousand dollar deduction where six of those roads were moved to a different agreement we have with Robert's. Change order two reflects a partial adjustment to cover additional fees that were incurred within the February, March twenty twenty-three invoices in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars. Staff recommends alternative one.
Any questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Burdette, second by Commissioner Deloach. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. None being, the ayes carry. Moving to new business number eight. Consideration to approve a purchase order with Custom Truck and Body Works, Inc. for the purchase of a Type Three ambulance.
Yes, sir. So there is still some uncertainty regarding the receipt times for the five ambulances that we currently have in order. There's a possibility that will be limited still, depending on what we receive, which has caused staff to look at other available options. Custom Truck and Body Works has supplied quotes for a Type Three fourteen-foot ambulance, which is currently on their lot, ready to be built. There are review differences between our current ambulances and this one, which I've noted on the staff report. This one that has reviewed, it does reflect the growth of alternative one.
This is a van, van-ville-ance, as I saw. I thought it was pretty funny.
Van-ville-ance.
It's not actually, it's, but it's stuck, so that's what I call it.
I'm going to need that to go in my barn dominium.
All right, any other comments, questions? Motion?
Make a motion to approve order number one.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Loper, a second by Commissioner Deloach. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. None being, the ayes carry. Moving to new business number nine. Consideration to approve change order number six for Agreement twenty-two dash twenty-five dash zero one zero with McLendon Enterprises related to the Sand Hill Complex and Corinth Church Road.
Yes, sir. So change order six has been submitted. They are requesting additional funds for the Sand Hill Complex for asphalt leveling as well as additional funds for repaving and base repairs for Corinth Church Road, which are itemized on that change order. Staff recommends alternative one.
This is especially good. I've been getting a lot of complaints about Sand Hill.
That's terrible. No, we need it fixed.
Any other questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Burdette, a second by Commissioner Floyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed likewise. Unanimous. Moving on to new business number ten. Consideration to approve change order number three for Contract twenty-two dash twenty-five dash zero zero eight dash one to Ranger Construction for the F D R E of Ash Roads.
Yes, sir. So change order three represents a quantity reconciliation. It's been provided by Robert Civil Engineering for the work that has been completed by Ranger. This change order does reflect a total of a deduction of two million eight hundred sixty-seven thousand fifty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. Staff recommends alternative one.
It's an easy one.
It's not often I get to do that.
Yeah, without.
Other questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Burdette, a second by Commissioner Deloach. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. None being, the ayes carry. New business number eleven. Consideration to approve to submit two community project funding request forms to the Office of Representative Earl Buddy Carter.
Good afternoon again. Mark Barnes, my ass director. With Representative Buddy Carter's office is now accepting fiscal year twenty twenty-four funding requests and staff is asking for approval to request funding for the due sanitary force maintenance on Hodgeville Road and the affluent line portion of the Loop B project on Blue Jay Road. Staff recommends approval to submit the community project funding request forms to the Office of Representative Buddy Carter.
Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Deloach and a second by Commissioner Loper. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. None being, the ayes carry. Moving to our final item of new business number twelve. Consideration to approve Resolution number zero two three, zero, zero two three dash zero zero four related to the anticipated memorandum of understanding for the new opioid settlements and for participation in said settlements.
Staff is recommending approval of the resolution to accept the anticipated new opioid settlements MOU and participate in the settlements. There are new opioid settlements in the works and the settlement MOUs are anticipated to be materially identical to the previous two that have come before the work. And law firm B U G A recommended that Georgia counties go ahead and adopt this resolution. The resolution was provided by their plan in anticipation of the new drug drops. For timing reasons, they're expecting April eighth to be the deadline, so they will recommend counties go ahead and get on that. Staff recommends alternative number one, approve the resolution to include the anticipated new opioid settlements MOU and participate in the settlement.
Questions, comments?
Just one question. Does that, when we do get stuff like that, is it earmarked for some, some kind of program?
Yes, sir. The, the first two settlements came out to about a hundred and forty thousand dollars total and there is specific guidelines.
Does that have to use it?
Mostly opioid crisis medication.
We don't know what we'll get from this one this quarter, what they have.
Yes, sir. I don't have the breakdown yet on what, what happened.
Okay. As long as we get something.
Yeah.
At their mercy. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Burdette, a second by Commissioner Deloach. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed likewise. None being, the ayes carry. That pretty much finishes up regular business. We'll move on to reports and I'll start to my right, anybody.
Sure, the, just to give an update on the budget process. We have been having our departmental meetings regarding the budget. I would say we're about three quarters of the way through. We do have some stragglers that we're going to fill up or finish up this week and next week. Our thought is, as we begin to wrap those up, we will be reaching out to y'all to see if you want to sit down to discuss the requests and the findings, maybe three at a time or something like that during the day to give just kind of an overall update of the direction that we're going before we present it to the board as a final document, a final recommended document. But we're looking probably in the first week of April on that and we'll be reaching out to you individually on it.
I do.
I don't have anything.
Anything?
Your E, your E O M monthly report was emailed to you yesterday. That's the only thing that.
Mr. Floyd?
I don't. I was, I still have comments on what we just went through with the Assessor's Office. I don't know how often that happens, but I don't think anybody's property should be rezoned without our approval. Or it shouldn't get to that office. I don't know how that happened. I can't imagine paying seventeen hundred dollars one year and then getting a bill for thirty-two thousand the next. And I didn't do a thing. How something like that happens, I don't know.
Well, they group, they group properties together?
To assume that, I kept saying, well, we assumed, shouldn't be an assumption. Because some people just pay the tax thinking they're scared of government. That's what makes people despise the government and stuff like that, in my opinion. But that's just my two cents on that.
Yeah, but in this case, they were grouped together, so they just assumed it was all one value without consideration for that parcel. And so he got lack.
I get it, but don't assume you're taking people's money.
Exactly, exactly.
That's not our job.
I mean, it was the right forum for it. They should, in order to get something done, they had to come to the board.
I think there should be some procedure there. Because that guy wouldn't have stepped up here. He'd just spend an extra thirty grand.
And I think we did the right thing.
I do too.
I feel good about that one.
There's one of those things that burns me.
What, what did they have to do with that property?
Who?
This Pearl and Hermodyl located on Old Augusta Road. And he was a representative for Pearl and Hermodyl.
He's the owner.
How were they involved in this?
They own the property.
It's under their name.
Pearl and Hermodyl owns the property.
It's just titled.
That's his company.
That was his company.
That was his own company?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So that's why, why, why is he being a, okay, I got you.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's just the owner.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought maybe that had something to do with it.
No, no, he, 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 he is Pearl and Hermodyl. Yeah.
All right, I just, I looked at that. I said, well, I thought maybe that had something to do with him going up on the taxes.
Oh, just, yeah. And I'm sure that does kind of, just, just the name of the company, I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
If I'd got a bill out of pen, that part, I'd hope that.
I'd have had a heart attack if I saw that, dude. God, I don't have any that large.
For no reason whatsoever.
That's all I had.
Okay. Commissioner Burdette?
Yeah, Tim, just wanted to bring this up and kind of get it on everybody's radar. I've been sending you some stuff from Chance on some suggestions. Don't know if you got the latest one on that. Still a pretty high dollar amount, I think.
I, I think since it probably does involve the county providing some sort of acquiring that road, we may want to bring that up in executive session as well.
Okay, okay. I wouldn't want to do that today, but we'll talk about that more, but.
Absolutely.
Well, we're trying, can I tell them what we're trying to accomplish there, though?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yes.
There's, there's eighty to a hundred trucks that come out on Hodgeville, right beside the fire station on Hodgeville, trying to find an alternate route where we can get everything to the Parkway when the Parkway is built. And trying to find the least expensive way to do it. But that's, right now, it's about eighty trucks a day and you can imagine when.
And it's just those originating from that location, right?
Exactly, exactly. So you got the, the concrete plant and you got the pipe plant right there side by side. And everything gets dumped on Hodgeville right now, so we could, that's going to grow as well. So we could get those off that more of a residential road on the Parkway would be great. But looking at a couple of different alternatives to be able to do that without spending tons of, of money as well, so.
I do.
That's it.
Are we having a workshop at our next meeting? When's our next workshop?
The next one, the following one.
I thought today was supposed to be the workshop.
It was supposed to be. So I just expressed to you all how heavy budget has been and, yeah, we opted out over this.
Well, I was reading one of the planning board's emails that he sent on concerns on the R three zoning and some potential changes that he would like to see. So I don't know if, I don't know if we need to put that on an agenda or wait till the next workshop, but.
We can, we can discuss, I mean, we could, we can put that. We, we've got quite a few R threes in the queue already. And so any changes that we do right now, I would think will probably be, wouldn't affect those. But the, but we could, we could either do a quick workshop at the next meeting, although that will be a long night because you, you come in early and then there's a lot of stuff on the, on the docket. So, or, or we can just simply make the R three changes the topic for the second meeting in April.
Yeah, why don't we just make that an agenda item?
Okay, or an agenda item for the, for the fourth? April fourth or the, or the second meeting in April?
Probably the second meeting in April.
No problem.
We'll do that.
I'll be honest, I'm not a huge fan of, of, you know, discussing those that were triggered by rezoning that's going to be going, you know what, it's, it's almost like a, a hearing before the hearing. It's not, but, you know, I just don't like to get it, get those kind of workshop items right ahead of a.
Of, of, so if we wait till after, because those items will, should be on the agenda.
For the next meeting, right.
Or for the April fourth and then we'll be, what, the twenty, I mean, eighteen?
Similar to what happened with the surface mines. You know, we had some going through and then we were trying to kind of implement some of that. Similar to what happened with the surface mines. You know, we had some going through, and then we were trying to kind of implement some of that, but we hadn't approved it, and.
That's right.
It's just, you know, gets hairy, gets hairy.
We could always ask them to add some things in the meantime as a condition, if we, if we.
Yeah, conditions to individual zoning, sure. While, you know, while any, and then we change it thereafter.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Commissioner Deloach after I read that and seen the, the main point of it being, you know, we're kind of inflicting on current neighborhoods to have to protect themselves with fences and buffers and everything else. Really should be on the, on the new developer to be able to do that in some way. I don't know what that is, or I don't want to try to define that, but that was a great point.
I agree. Well, I'm happy to report that McLendon Enterprises got done early with a project, and they're moving on to Corinth Church Road tomorrow to finish that up. And that has been a big thorn in my side for quite a while, so. And the reason why they wanted to go ahead and move is because as of right now, there doesn't appear to be any log, log truck operations on there. And Rip had told me that they're going to try to get out that, um, notifications tomorrow.
Right, and we don't have, and I checked the, any sort of pending permits. There, there isn't anything new. Just the, whatever, the two existing ones, so I think one of them's complete and the other one's just kind of over time.
Okay, that's all I got.
Mr. Loper?
I'm good.
I'm good as well. Do we have an executive session I need?
Yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for executive session.
I'll make a motion to go on executive session to discuss property, personnel, and possible litigation. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Deloach, a second by Commissioner Floyd. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed likewise. Approved. We're entering executive session.